Good evening. I would like to call to order the school committee meeting for this May 15th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
We lost the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Improv? So as usual, beginning of our meetings, we allot 10 minutes for public comment. And so I welcome any... Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Jeepers. Kathleen Amroth.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Elizabeth Coughlin.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Jordan Neuns.
Yep.
Mr. Oliver. Oh, my goodness. So at the beginning of meetings, we allot 10 minutes for public comment. And I just ask that when you come up, identify, you know, your name. And then with it being on the agenda for 10 minutes, just be mindful that there might be other people that want to get up and speak. And try to be as current as possible. But come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bosley Kamash. I am an 18-year resident of Dartmouth. I am a parent of four children who have come through the Dartmouth Public Schools. And I am a third-grade teacher for the last 15 years at the D'Amela School. In light of the FinCom and the Select Board fully funding our budget at 4.4%, we are seeking further classification about a line item in the school budget that is available online. There is a line for classroom staff, separate from the administration staff, with a percent change of 5.5%, resulting in an extra $1.5 million. The DEA has rallied to support a fully funded budget, and we are asking for more transparency as we continue to hear that our COLA increases are at a standstill at the negotiation table. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Costa. I'm a secretary at the Dartmouth Middle School, and I am representing the secretaries unit. We feel as a unit that the district does not seem willing to pay the secretaries a fair wage. Do you not believe we are worth the $8,000 a year we are asking for for the next three years? $8,000 is the difference in the salary pay of Dr. Gifford and the new superintendent, Dr. Saber McGuire. Union secretaries are paid less than their non-union counterparts. We were told that FinCom and Select Board have fully funded the school budgets. For $24,000, the district can pay the union secretaries what they deserve for the next three years. We are worth investing in. Collectively, we have 278 years of experience in this district, providing collective support for all administrators in this district. We have given you our loyalty. We are asking for respect in terms of a fair wage. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gillian Bond, and I am a lifelong Dartmouth resident. I was privileged to attend grades K through 12 within the Dartmouth Public School system. I received an enriched education from passionate and inspiring teachers that afforded me many of the opportunities I've had throughout my life. When my husband and I were deciding where to buy a home and start a family 10 years ago, this was the primary reason we chose to stay in Dartmouth. I am the proud mom of a Quinn's second grader. All of the teachers, assistants, and support staff we've encountered over the past three years have been incredible. My son feels loved and supported every day at school. Through remote kindergarten and on, our son has received the highest quality education that we've come to expect from Dartmouth. However, as a fellow educator in a neighboring district, I worry what the next 10 years of my son's education may hold if we don't start valuing our teachers and giving them what they deserve. Dartmouth is losing its competitive edge in recruiting and retaining highly qualified educators. Surrounding districts are offering higher pay and better benefits. Teachers have the ability to be more selective about the jobs they apply for and ultimately select as the number of education job vacancies has increased due to teachers leaving the profession at an unprecedented rate since the pandemic. Anyone who has ever worked in education for more than a few years will tell you that this is truly a calling. This profession is so much more than a job. Your kids become our kids, and we often spend more time with them than our own families. These educators aren't here for the money, but that doesn't mean it's right to pay them peanuts. People should be able to afford to live in the community that they dedicate their lives to. Even the most amazing students and supportive staff won't pay the bills. We come tonight to say, to ask you to fully support our teachers. A fair wage and affordable healthcare seem a low price to pay for the exceptional teachers we have in this district. We have heard the new superintendent saying she wants us to be the best in the state and the best in the country. We won't get there if you chase away amazing teachers because of poor pay and a horrible insurance split. Give our teachers what they deserve so we can keep them in our district with our children. Thank you.
I am Jodi Parisi. I'm co-president of the Dartmouth Educators Association, and I work at Quinn's School. Over the past few months, several of my colleagues have come to speak about the elementary 8:45 to 9:05 time. The school committee's position is that going directly to the classroom is what is best for students. I would like to add context to this topic. Prior to 2011, for over 30 years, students went outside as soon as they arrived at school in the morning. In 2011, this changed, the argument being that it was taking kids too long to get to classrooms after the bell rang. Rather than attempting to streamline the process or ring the bell earlier, students were instead assigned to designated areas in the building from 8:45 to 9:05. The motto was "9:05, pencils in hand, time on learning." This change from playing outside to waiting inside was not the decision of teachers, but that of Superintendent Riley. In fact, educators were upset by this change. Although their duty schedule remained the same on a rotating basis, they were upset because they knew fresh air, exercise, and socializing is good for kids. Unfortunately, at the beginning of the 2019-20 school year, Superintendent Gifford further restricted the socialization of Dartmouth Elementary students. Students who entered the building at 8:45 are not interacting with their body of peers, but going directly to class, where they may be the only student for several minutes prior to being joined by other classmates. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, their policy on the role of unstructured play in school includes four critical benefits: greater levels of physical activity and fitness, improved attentiveness in class, improved cognition and learning, and practice of peer-to-peer social emotional skills. The latter, often overlooked, is cited by child development experts as a fundamental skill set, laying the basis for social success later in life. In Dartmouth, we are in the bottom in terms of per pupil expenditure in the state. Allowing students that very valuable time in the morning would come at no cost to the district. We urge the school committee to reconsider this decision. Thank you.
That's it? Thank you very much. So I'm actually gonna skip approval of minutes. Actually, I'm sorry, the recognition. Where one of the students who's being recognized is not gonna be timely. So I'm gonna push this down. And what I would like to propose is that we hear from Phoenix if, you know, an update, and then move into...
You got the minutes.
Do you want to do the minutes quickly? Okay. All right. We'll do the minutes, and then I'll ask you for your update, if that's okay. So I will entertain a motion for the regular and joint meeting for the April 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And so now I will entertain a motion for the executive session minutes of that same meeting of April 24th.
You want to do May 2nd?
And adding the executive session minutes for May 2nd as well.
So moved, Madam Chair, with the stipulation they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. And Dr. Jenkins, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that. And so Phoenix, thank you for being here, and you can update us on what's going on at the high school.
Sure. Good afternoon or evening at this point. So the school year is coming to a close for seniors, which, you know, I like personally. This is probably my second-to-last meeting. I'll aim to still come to the June 4th meeting and provide any update I can. The last meeting, I said I'd be trying to put out a survey to students. And so what I tried to do is I tried to wait until the agenda released, and that did not leave nearly enough time. So I wasn't able to get that out at all. But honestly, if I did, I imagine there'd be about three responses. Wouldn't be very helpful. So I think instead what I'm going to try is putting out a, just a constant comment box as like in the form of a Google form, which should hopefully populate with, you know, meaningful comments that I can voice to the school committee or, you know, the Student Advisory Council as a whole by the next meeting. But I'm not sure if there will be enough proactive students. I think that'll be something we're going to find out. I think that it'd still be interesting data to report back is that we're not getting very many responses. It's, you know, not as helpful as I'd hope, but it's still something. So we'll see how that goes.
Thank you.
No worries.
Anyone have any... Nope. Thank you so much.
I just have one question. Did you get the materials for this meeting before the meeting?
I did get the materials before the meeting.
I just want to make sure. Thank you.
I didn't try and put it out an hour ago. Don't worry.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. And so next, I would start with our presentation spotlight on kids, the Potter School. Well, that's fine with me. We're gonna go with the Quinn's School.
So we'll welcome Mr. Grandfield, Mrs. Thomas, Mrs. Yermolovich to the podium with some special guests tonight.
Good evening. Can you hear me with the...
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us tonight to talk about Quinn. So tonight, we're very excited. We have four of our fifth-grade year leaders here that will actually be facilitating our entire presentation. A little background, we had a PowerPoint that we were going to do first, which was talking about our new mascot that we have this year at the Quinn's School that we've been talking about the previous couple of years through our school improvement plan. These students on their own wanted to present that, and on top of that, actually made a second PowerPoint on their own that they'll also be presenting tonight as well, too. So other than introducing Mrs. Thomas, Mrs. Yermolovich, and myself, I'm gonna turn it right over to our students.
My name is Olivia Swanson.
My name is Emma Delgado.
My name is Tristan Michael Mears.
My name is Dustin Cabral.
How it started. In the spring, students voted on a mascot. The four choices were Quinn captains, Quinn stars, Quinn rockets, and Quinn lions. Lions won with over 300 votes.
Then we voted on a name. Quinn, Lionel, Roar, Leo, and the winning name was...
Leo. And now, to honor our mascot, we have coins or lion loot. So if an adult sees a kid doing something good, they will receive the lion loot. If you're in grades three to fifth, then you will put it in a pocket chart. But if you're in kindergarten to second grade, you put it in a bowl. And obviously, we won't let, we won't just make you do good work without having a reward. So the class that has the most coins will get a special reward. The top three students in all classes in how many coins that each student have collected or if the teachers recognize that they were good in any of our four character traits, responsible, organized, accepting, and respectful, they will earn one of the, a brag tag and a certificate of excellence in the topic for that trimester.
I pledge today to do my best. In reading, math, and all the rest. I promise to obey the rules. In my class and in our school. I'll respect myself and others, too. I'll expect the best in all I do. I'm here to learn all I can. To try my best and be all I am.
So the students are going to explain in their own words with their own presentation what roar means to them. We just need one minute just to get their presentation ready. They created this all by themselves.
This is why being responsible can help you safe and help you learn. Oh, wait, wait. That's what, that's how being responsible helps. Well, oh my. Being responsible helps keep you safe and help you learn. I thought that was the title because the top part was cut off. I don't know why. Oh, wait. No, I still have another sign. This is how to be responsible. You shouldn't be late. You should be direct when moving from class to class. You should walk together. You should wash your hands. You should not eat with your mouth open. You should use equipment properly. You shouldn't stand on the bus. You should be, and you should be kind, and you should not lie. This is how to be organized. One, clean out your locker. Two, have a place for everything, like your books, folders, homework assignments, and your Chromebook. Three, go through everything to see if there's anything that you don't really need. For every minute spent organizing, an hour is earned. Benjamin Franklin. How to stay organized, because once you start, you can't stop. Write it down on a piece of paper to remind yourself. Two, put sticky notes to where things go. Three, don't take so much stuff out at one time. Four, do at least one cleanup each week or two. And my final thing for organized is how being organized can help. One, there won't be as much of a mess for you or the custodians to clean up. Two, it will be much more easier to get your stuff. Three, you will be able to get your items faster. Four, you won't lose things so often slash so quickly. And five, if you have a clean and organized area, then you'll have more me time.
How be, how being accepting helps. How to be accepting. When you are at recess, you include others to play with you. Compromise when other people don't agree. When changes happen, even though you might not like them, you have to accept them. How being accepting helps. It helps you to be a nice person. It helps make you more empathetic. It helps, it helps you understand kids' differences. The only way to have a friend is to be one. Ralph Waldo Emerson.
How to be respectful. Say please and thank you. Walk in a line with your hands by your side. Close your lockers quietly. Be polite and wait your turn. Take care of school property and listen to your teacher and peers. Why is it important to be respectful? It is important to be respectful because respect means that you accept somebody for who they are, even when they are different from you or you don't agree with them. Respect in your relationships builds feeling of trust, safety, and well-being.
And the students? Each student has a brag tag for each of you that has our roar on it.
So thank you very much, and thank you very much to our fifth graders for being here tonight. We'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Just as simple as that.
So I just want to say I had the messiest locker in middle school, and I can attest that I did not have a lot of me time because I had to spend it cleaning out my locker. So good advice about keeping your locker clean, speaking from experience.
And I'm just impressed with how well you did in such a big crowd, like, breathe. Good job.
Yeah, what a great job with your presentation. I love the PowerPoints. I love the shirts. This was just a very well-done presentation of how you came about with your mascot. So great job to all of you.
Yeah, fantastic. I'm really impressed with, you know, your leadership and the way in which you presented and took the initiative and created this and, you know, shared this with all of us. And thank you for the tag, and I would just appreciate it. Thank you.
Good job.
Excellent. So we're gonna move forward and introduce Potter School is gonna go next.
So the Potter School Spotlight on Kids will welcome Mr. Porter and Mrs. McHenry and their special guests from Potter School.
Good evening, and on behalf of all the Potter students, we thank you for the opportunity to talk to you all tonight. So this is my third year as principal presenting Potter's Spotlight on Kids. Now, due to COVID-19 for the last two years, we have been unable to bring students to this presentation. Well, tonight is different, and I could not be happier. This evening, you're gonna hear from six amazing grade-five students who are gonna tell you why Potter School is special to them. A recurring theme that you will hear from these children is not necessarily about the academic learning that has occurred during these years at Potter, although they will mention how prepared they are for their future endeavors. You will hear about the importance of relationships. I have been with the Dartmouth Public Schools as a teacher and administrator for 33 years, so I feel well-versed in knowing what makes our school system special. The legacy of the Dartmouth schools is about how staff invest in kids in a most meaningful way that leaves a positive impression on those youngsters for years to come. And that legacy is alive and well today. I see it every morning when I see kids coming off the bus and heading to their classrooms, whether it's the music teacher in the hall brightening their day with happy tunes while he's playing his guitar, or it's a beloved educator who connects with a child to assist them with a division challenge before the official start of the day at 9:05. It can be a staff member who greets a student at 8:45 who is in their classroom every morning, who remembers to ask the kid how their sick pet is doing. It can be the custodian who has known some of these kids since kindergarten and sees them in the hallway before the start of the day, who offers them words of encouragement. It is how we treat each other that has made all of the Dartmouth schools a home away from home for many of our students. So last week, we celebrated Staff Appreciation Days. And on behalf of all of us here tonight, I would like to take my hat off to all the staff of the Dartmouth Public Schools for being there for kids and always knowing what's best for children. I think they deserve a round of applause. Lastly, when you hear these essays, you will be reminded that, as we as adults need to remember, that sometimes it takes a kid to find the silver lining in even the most difficult times. But enough from me, now you need to hear from the experts. So Cameron, will you lead us off tonight?
Hello. My name is Cameron Lever. My time at Potter School was extraordinary because it is like no other school. It is a very special place. The lunch ladies are master cooks, and their lunches are yummy. Potter School does a great job getting all fifth graders ready for middle school. Potter School is special because of ketchup at my best lips. If the school gets enough slips, then we have a school-wide activity. Also, on morning and afternoon announcements, Mr. Porter and Mrs. McHenry called on two people that have learned, earned a slip to pick out a prize. They have many good lunches at Potter. My favorite lunch is the chicken spaghetti meal. It is 10 out of 10. I'm not being biased because I'm Italian, but it is really good. Two of my friends also said it was a 10 out of 10. The lunch ladies make the pasta perfectly, and the chicken is, mm, so good. Like I said, oh, no. The chicken pasta is 10 out of 10. Like I said, in Potter School, Potter School gets you ready for middle school. The fifth-grade teachers give you a bit of sixth-grade work so you're prepared. The work may be hard, but it really will help you out when you start sixth grade. All in all, Potter School is a great school. They prepare you for the next grade. They have great food. And they have really cool activities when you get enough ketchup at my best lips. and they have really cool activities when you get enough catchment at my best slips.
Hello, my name is Chloe Tripp. Potter School is so amazing. Many things make it special. Just, just a few things that make Potter School special is the way it made me feel when I first came to Potter. Also how the teachers made it fun during COVID. Lastly, the many things Potter Schools taught me. My first year at Potter was in first grade. Mrs. Filoso was a big part in why my first year was so special. She was kind and always made learning fun. Another reason why my first year was so special was the friends I made. Because I did not have a lot of friends because I moved schools, so my sister was basically my only friend. When I came here, the girls in my class were very welcoming and kind. So that helped me with my confidence because I knew I could make friends. At the end of second grade, COVID hit and we all had to stay home and do school from home. It was hard to do school from home, but the second-grade teachers made it fun for us with the second-grade play. Then when we went into third grade, we were still online for one and a half months. Then in October, we came back in cohorts A and B. Mrs. Oliver helped us with everything from computer problems to teaching us how to multiply. My favorite part of third grade was when we would play around the world with our multiplication facts. Then at the end of third grade year, we got to get rid of all the cohorts, but we still had masks on. That is how we finished our third grade year. Then we came back to fourth grade, still had masks on for some of the year. Then we finally got to take our, the mask off and it was almost back to normal. Potter School has taught me a lot of things. How could I possibly write everything down? To name a few, I learned how to be kind and treat others how you want to be treated. I also learned how to be a good student and listen to the teacher. I also learned about the moon faces and multiplying fractions. One of my favorite things I learned how to do is to read. This is my favorite because I read all the time and if I do not, if I did not have this skill, I would not be able to read all my favorite stories. In conclusion, Potter School is so amazing. Many things make it special. Just a few things that make Potter School special is the way it made me feel when I first came to Potter. Also how the teachers made it fun during COVID. Lastly, the many things Potter Schools taught me.
All my life, I thought about only one thing. The fact that my school accepted me so fast. Hello, my name is Rafael Gurgas and I'm a student at George H. Potter School. I am in fifth grade. I first came here in kindergarten. I'm about to tell you why I always wondered about this and why it was so important. Potter School was special to me because I made good memories. Everyone was so kind. And finally, because I spent a majority of my elementary schools there. The first reason Potter School is special to me is because I made good memories. When I first arrived on the bus, I was lost. Everyone was talking on the bus. I didn't know anyone, but when I stepped foot into this, the school building, I immediately felt like I was at home. With a warm welcome and some kind hearts from the teachers, I felt good. I walked into the classroom and suddenly I froze. When, even when my heart was frozen, I still felt good. At recess, I didn't meet my friends right away. I met them on the fourth or fifth day. Everyone at the school was very nice. My first friends were Landon Ekstrom and Nathaniel Irovitsky. They were very nice to me and I made memory, many good memories with them. Which means I also made good memories in the school. I remember making many games outside at recess. Those were some of my greatest memories. The second reason Potter School was so special to me is because everyone was so kind to me. In first grade, I knew most of the people and everyone was nice to me. I had made a good relationship with everybody and everyone accepted me as a student. Every time I wasn't happy, they would comfort me and make sure I was okay. My friends were now very nice to me and they comforted me. They always asked for my opinion before theirs. I had many more friends such as Avery, Ben, and Isaac. Nobody on the bus seemed like a stranger to me. Not all of them were my friends, but I still knew most of the people on the bus. That was the same year I was introduced to a kindness plan to prevent bullying. These were the many ways that my school was, was so kind. The final reason Potter School was so special to me is because I spent most of my elementary school years in this school. In fourth grade, I felt like I knew everything about the school. The way to the classroom, the teachers. I even felt like I knew every single classmate in the whole grade and on the bus. I knew almost everyone in the whole grade and I noticed something in my ears. Every year, I had made more friends. In fourth grade, I had new friends such as Isaac Parsons and Ryan Riley. At the same time, I was making a better relationship with my original friends. These are the reasons why Potter School is so special to me. Because I made good memories, everyone was so kind, and finally, because I spent a majority of my elementary school years there.
Hi, hi, my name is Olivia Berry and I've been at Potter School since kindergarten. And both my parents went to Potter School too. You might think it's hard going to school if you're shy because you have to talk and answer questions. But at Potter School, it's different. Potter School is special to me because my teachers make me feel at home. We have a big space at recess so we can have more fun and there aren't too many rules. Potter School is special to me because the teachers always make me feel welcome. In kindergarten, my teacher, Mrs. Heller, never made me talk when I didn't feel comfortable talking. In first grade, when I was sad, my teacher, Mrs. Martino, always comforted me and made me happier. In third grade, my teacher would let me go up to her when I had a question and my fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Porter, would also let me go up to her instead of saying it across the class. Also, my fifth-grade teacher, Mr. Dutra, let me go up to the teacher table to ask questions. Potter School is special to me because we have a big space at recess so we can have more fun. When I went to my cousin's school, they only had a little bit of space for recess. And we have two playgrounds called Bigfoot and Littlefoot. Bigfoot is bigger than Littlefoot and we can also play at the picnic tables or in Mrs. Goodman's garden. Potter School is special to me because there aren't too many rules. The three main rules are called P to the three and they're pause to be kind, pause to be a learner, and pause to be safe. At recess, an example is there's a buddy bench for if you have no one to play with and you cannot jump off the slides. Potter will always be special because the staff are kind, we have room at recess, and there are not a million rules.
My name is Catherine Nemaris. I'm in the fifth grade with the most amazing teacher, Mr. Rand. I've been a student here for about two years. I moved here in second grade, left, and came back in fifth. Honestly, I couldn't be more happy about my decision. These are three of the many reasons why Potter School is so special to me. One is the amazing staff members. Next are Potter traditions and finally, how Potter has prepared me for middle school. Every morning, I'm always so anxious to get ready as fast as I can to catch the bus at 8:30, even if that means sometimes I have to tie my shoes on the bus. Just so I can get, just so I can greet Mr. Lena, my bus driver. As we get dropped off at the doors of school, almost every day, I see Mr. Nick the Custodian and wave a hello his way. As always, he waves with his blue latex gloves on and says either hey hun or hey sweetie. This always makes my day. I could never forget about my fifth-grade teacher, Mr. Rand. Let me tell you, she's awesome, especially when she put it, especially when she put up with my at-times behavior at the beginning of the year. In second grade, I was so lucky to be in Ms. Lawrence's class in 2019 and 2020. Let me tell you one thing, I love Potter traditions. They're all so fun and, so fun and exciting. For example, the Halloween parade. It's so fun, but also kind of embarrassing walking in your Halloween costume in front of everyone. But that makes it more exciting. In second grade, I was a blow-up dinosaur and I needed help getting on the stage because I almost fell. And, oh, the Super Bowl, this one's not embarrassing, but whatever class brought in the most canned goods holds the beloved Super Bowl trophy. My class, Mr. Rand, had it until this year, Ms. Pimentel won it over. And even at the end of the year, the fifth-grade recognition night, you come with your parents in your car and there's streamers, balloons, people honk, everybody's clapping, etc. It's basically a fifth-grade graduation. Let me tell you, fourth graders, you're in for a treat next year. The final reason Potter is so special to me is that it's prepared me so well for middle school. Especially Mr. Rand for teaching me so many new things and helping me this year. As she would say, we're in the year of the sixth grader. Even though it's gonna, going to be really hard moving on to middle school and leaving all of my elementary teachers behind and the friends I have that might go to different middle schools, I think I'll be able to move on even if it takes time. This is why Potter School is so special to me and how I will never forget my awesome time here at Potter Elementary School.
Beep beep, and there's Bus 11 coming to pick me up for my first day of school. I walk on the bus, I see Becky, my favorite bus driver ever. I step into the aisle, look to my right, I see Rafael sleeping. I look to my left, I see Dominic staring out the window. That's how it all started. My name is Alec Coff and I'm at Potter Elementary School for my sixth year. And I'm still loving it. But the, but these are just three reasons why Potter is special to me. First of all, I've made lots and lots of friends here at Potter. I almost, I also love Potter traditions. And last, but certainly not least, Potter just wouldn't be the same without all of the great staff members. The first reason why Potter Elementary School is special to me is all the friends I've made. My friends at Potter have helped me make so many great memories. If it wasn't for Potter, I would be lonely and bored every day of the week. I also would probably have about two friends. My friends just make school so much more fun. I couldn't imagine it without them. Most of the time, they even make hard projects fun. I guess school wouldn't be so bad without them, but they're just the cheese on my pizza. I couldn't go without them. The second reason why Potter is special to me is all of their tradition. One example is the Super Bowl. Although I've never won, it's always fun competing with the rest of the school. Another fun Potter tradition is the second-grade geography play. Even if I had to do it online, the school has still found a way to make it fun. It's always been very fun, the last, it's also been very fun the last few years watching the play. The last Potter tradition I'm going to mention is the Halloween parade. It's all you could ever ask for. You get to show off your costume and walk through the whole school and look at all the other creative costumes. And finally, the last reason why I love Potter School is the great staff. I've never had a teacher that I don't like. I'm going to horribly miss all of the staff members when I go off to middle school. They all do their job perfectly. I look at them as a teacher while I'm in the class, but when I move up a grade, I look at them as a friend. All of my teachers have made school so much more fun with their great activities. But Mr. Porter has taught me more lessons than any teacher. That's just three reasons why Potter Elementary School is special to me. But I couldn't go, but I could go on and on. I don't know what I would do without this place.
So now for a few thank-yous and let's start with the students first. Thank you for your hard work and your bravery in coming out tonight and sharing all of your wonderful memories with all of us. So can we give them another round of applause? And thank you to their parents who took time out of, I'm sure, a very busy home-life schedule to bring them here tonight. We appreciate you and we love that you, we get to share every weekday with your children, so thank you. And thank you to our staff. And we'll start with the fifth-grade teachers, Mr. Dutra, Mrs. Durand, and Mrs. Goodman, and the teacher assistant in fifth grade, Mrs. Braga, for their guidance and the time that they took to have our students work on this project. So thank you. And to all of our staff that have created the memorable experiences that the students so eloquently shared with all of you tonight. It is obvious that they value the importance of building relationships with students beyond just academics. So we thank you. And lastly, thank you to the school committee for giving Potter School another opportunity to share our happy place with all of you. And we'll, we'll be happy to take any feedback or any questions. And I'll have the students perhaps, perhaps answer those questions.
In all seriousness, it's a wonderful presentation to the students, great job. You were very articulate and very well-versed to the teachers and that helped you out, I appreciate it. Great job. Keep up the good work and good luck in middle school next year.
Yeah, I'll agree, they were great presentations, you all did a great job. And it's also, it's clear the quality of instruction that went into writing those essays. You all did an awesome job and your teachers did as well in getting you here, so thank you.
Yeah, I would like to say the writing was exceptional and I love that each of your personalities shown through. You are all individuals. Wonderful, wonderful presentation, all very different, lovely.
So this is why I enjoy being on school committee for nights like this. Between this presentation and the presentation by Quinn earlier, what a great job to each and every one of you. Like some of my colleagues in school committee said, very, very articulate, very creative. And I, I just love the presentation. And there's certainly some things to be said about what's going on over at Potter School. So great job to all of you and to the, to the educators at Potter as well as you two.
Yeah, I think my colleagues said it all. I, I just will add that assuming you're all moving up to Dartmouth Middle School, you've got something to look forward to because there's a wonderful group of teachers and educators and programs awaiting you. So I look forward to see how you move forward and thank you for, you know, your staff and, and your leadership and, and helping, you know, facilitate these, you know, our future. So thank you very much.
And so I received word that we're ready for that next item on the agenda. I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Kylie. About to wait a sec.
While everyone's leaving.
Okay.
You too.
You too, thank you.
Good job.
Really great job.
Yeah.
Little future leader, there's little leaders.
I know. Those were great.
Yeah.
Most as good as my budget discussion is gonna be coming up.
There's a, there's a jam, there's a.
I don't know why they're taking so long to file out here.
Yeah, so they can't get in itself.
They're only opening one door.
They opened them both now. Keep walking.
There isn't a fire.
What?
Good thing there isn't a fire. It's a very slow exit.
That was fun. That was very nice. Enjoyed that.
I'm gonna wait to see if the students.
So tonight, we're going to welcome Mr. Shea to the podium to present us with two outstanding winners of the Superintendent's Certificate of Academic Excellence.
There's a reason why the high school likes to usually go first, just so we all know. I'm not gonna be that cute. I thank you, everyone. I have really the honor and the distinction and the pleasure to introduce or reintroduce two students, Sean and Serena. You know, and just to take a step back, without the efforts of those elementary school efforts and the roar and the relationships, I don't know if all of our students would be here. So we are truly grateful of the process that gets our students to the high school. I wanna introduce you to Serena today. Serena is, is fresh off a track meet. So talk about dedication, talk about school not ending at 2:30. This is two students that define it. The term unsung hero is fitting for Serena. She's a student who continues to meet expectations placed on her while never seeking attention for her efforts. Serena has maximized her experience at DHS, thriving in both academics and athletic. Serena has maximized her experience at DHS, thriving in both academics and athletic leadership. She has earned a 4.23 GPA out of a potential 4.3. She has done this while participating in rigorous coursework. She has taken a total of six AP classes, earning the distinction of AP Scholar. Serena has the passion for STEM coursework and has served as the impetus for her success. Attention in math and sciences have helped her achieve her goal of entering the world of medicine. Not only is Serena an academic scholar, she's also a three-season athlete. Serena was a member of the cross-country team as well as captain of winter and spring track. Serena leads by example and is respected by her peers. In meets, she'll often run the one mile, turn around, run a two mile, or a four by four, which I don't know if anyone wants to run the 400, but that's okay. Depending on what is best for the needs of the team. Her coaches describe her as a responsible student athlete. She often leads the distance runners on her own. She is always willing to do whatever it takes to support the team. Outside of support, outside of supports, Serena's a member of the medical careers club. She has been a lead organizer for this year's blood drive. Organizing is a massive task. It includes, but not limited to, working with the Red Cross prior to the event, recruiting volunteers, and gathering students and teachers to donate blood. Her involvement at DHS has modeled her as a leader and paved the way for future success. When talking with Serena's teachers, the most common terms to describe her are hardworking and kind. In terms of hard work, it's not evident through only her transcript and track accomplishments. It's also the little things that teachers have noticed. Serena is constantly trying to learn from her mistakes. She is always willing and wanting to do rework, redo her work even with minimal errors. She doesn't want to just fix the error, she wants to know the why. She is focused on improving always. In addition to her dedication to excellence in learning, Serena's kindness and compassion for others separate her from the rest. It is difficult to see Serena leave DHS. However, she will succeed and represent Dartmouth well, and she continues her education at UMass this fall, UMass Amherst this fall. Congratulations, Serena. The next student I get to introduce is Sean Martin. Sean Martin is the example of what it means to take advantage of all that DHS has to offer. He embodies the definition of academics, leadership, and service. He has earned a GPA of 4.27 out of a potential 4.3, meaning in his entire career at DHS, he's earned an A+ in every class but two. He earned an A instead. At the end of his career at DHS, Sean will have taken a total of 12 AP classes in which he excelled. Sean has earned three College Board awards and a capstone diploma. In his sophomore year, he was identified as an AP Scholar with Honors by surpassing the average AP score of 3.25 with a 4.25. Then, not to be outdone, his junior year, he kicked it up a notch. Sean was named AP Scholar with Distinction by earning an average AP score of 4.5 out of five. Sean has been an active member of the school community, a school community. He has ta, he has been a member of the football and basketball teams as well as unified track. As class president for all four years, Sean is leaving a lasting legacy. He challenges me every day. He was in my office today, challenging me. But he challenges me to take risks and trust in the student body. Oftentimes when we meet, he ensures the administrative team that the student body will make the right decisions. His peers respect him, listen to him, and make decisions that better, that benefit the entire school experience. Sean understands the effect of the pandemic, and he continuously strives to make sure his class has the best experience coming out of it. I look forward to all the wonderful things for Sean as he enters the next day's educational career. Coming September, Sean will enter Harvard's class of 2027 studying finance, where he will make a difference. Congratulations, Sean. I can let these two talk if you want, but please, go ahead.
Hi, I just want to thank you, Mr. Shea, so much. Coming in this year, especially after COVID, years before, he made a huge impact on my senior year, especially unifying Dartmouth with the one Dartmouth slogan. It really unified us and brought us together, and I really do appreciate him. I also want to thank one of my favorite teachers here, like my favorite teacher here at Dartmouth High School, Mr. Reed. He like, he had a huge impact on my whole experience. I took US2 honors with him and AP Psychology, and they were the two best courses ever. I'm a STEM person, but Mr. Reed make me, made me love history and psychology, so I just want to thank him so much.
I'd like to start off by thanking the school committee for hearing us out and spending some time. I know you only meet every two weeks or every week, so this is extremely special for you to give us this time. I'd also like, like to thank Mr. Shea and the administrative team for considering me for this scholarship. I know truly what an honor it is to be one of the two people selected out of such an amazing class. I think during our time here, we've gone through a lot. We've, we've gone through a pandemic. We've, I've walked in halls marked off that tell me which side I can walk on, which side I can't. I've worn the masks. I've seen two different principals, about to be two superintendents, and I think with Mr. Shea coming in, he's done a great job of communicating. As a class president, I've had the honor of being able to talk with him very often about issues and making sure that the student body is represented in their best interests. So I'd just like to thank Mr. Shea and the administrative staff for, as we kind of return to normalcy, continuing to prioritize communication and allowing us to set the smoothest return possible and ensure that both the interests of the staff and the students are represented. It's been a real honor. Thank you.
I think Mr. Oliver said it perfect. When Potter School was up here, this is why we do what we do, and we get the opportunity to see what our students are doing, and it never ceases to amaze me, and it's just wonderful. And I wish you and the senior class nothing but the best in the years to come.
Yeah, I'll just say congratulations. You also did a great job, and Mr. Shea put you on the spot to speak without notes, so I'm super impressed by that, and good luck next year.
Yeah, super impressed, and I know that you will represent Dartmouth very, very well.
Yeah, what a great accomplishment to you both. Mr. Shea had some wonderful things on behalf of the, your teachers and educators and staff here at the Dartmouth High School to say about both of you. So you should, both of you, as well as your family, should be extremely proud of your accomplishments. So I wish you nothing but the best in college, so congratulations.
Yeah, and congratulations. I'll just echo what my colleagues have said, you know, really impressed and look forward to seeing what else your unfolds for you in the future. So congratulations.
Excellent.
You may want to, I was going to say, you may want to turn around and see everyone standing behind you.
Thank you very much. Wow. So next on our agenda, my goodness, we are in old business. We're going to talk about the Towns Indigenous Peoples History and Culture Committee. Can I turn it over to you, Mr. Kylie, to give us an overview and step, proposed steps forward?
Sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Amorall. So it's been such a good night. We're now going to talk about the Towns Indigenous Peoples History and Culture Committee that the Select Board voted a charge and have now forwarded that charge to you folks for your consideration. So I know you've all had the charge. There are a few steps that I think the committee could take with this charge. If you find the charge acceptable in its current format, you could vote it and then discuss membership of the, of the voting members of the group. If there's anything that you want to consider for revisions, you could also, you know, proceed in that direction and forward those back, you could forward those back to the Select Board for their consideration. I do know, I noticed that we have Mrs. Wait here tonight, who has actually, you know, actively served in the school committee capacity on, on that group as well. So I've not been a part of that group, but I know she's represented the committee in that, in that, so you could certainly ask her to, to share her thoughts as well, her official capacity.
Would you, yeah, thank you, Mary, if you don't mind coming up just to give a.
I've followed all those amazing presentations.
Just remember, it's a lot easier out there than it is back here.
Oh, I don't know. Nice to see you all on this, on the side.
Good to see you.
So I, I just thought I'd give you an overview of like where that committee has been, you know, just to keep you up to date. You know, we started really as a working group with David Tattelbaum and I, like first meeting, talking about, you know, what this would look like, what our like charge was. Certainly, we wanted to make, you know, since the town voted overwhelmingly, and we did as a group, we voted to maintain the Indian as, as well as the logo. We wanted to move forward and make sure that we're educating the community, and that was like our main charge. So David and I started meeting, and then we like reached out to see what other committee members, you know, who else was interested, like throughout the community as well as in the schools. So to that expanded committee, it was, like I said, it was David and myself, as well as Sean McGinnis. Then Heidi Brooks had joined, Sally Aldrich, who came in as a, you know, really a member of the Historical Society. And then we have a number of our school folks, of course. We have Ross and Katie. Dr. Gifford attended those first initial meetings as well. And then in addition, Mike Martin, Lily Chamberlain, and Beth Nato. So I feel like we've had a really productive, like, group meeting, and in those meetings, you know, our, as a group, our mission was really to support the schools and the educational side. The curriculum is certainly not within our purview, as of course you all know, like from a school committee lens, but on the other side, the mission is to educate the town at large. So we did, you know, reach out to a number of various, you know, folks within like the Aquina. So in particular, David Tattelbaum met with those folks to try to like get their input and involvement. We also met with Peter Crowley and Anamun from the Wapanoa experience. So we found out a little bit of what they're doing. They're the ones who erected the, the We Two over at Round the Bend Farm. So we talked to them, and they like provided some of their, like, you know, ideas. And we also more recently met, you know, Under and I have to give Ms. Chamberlain back there, like certainly a tremendous amount of credit for organizing the meeting with members of the Casette, who we met to talk about here within Dartmouth, to talk about erecting a display case to really like right in the central, like lobby, to really show like an honorable history and the current culture of the, our unique history with our mass, well, I was just going to say like logo and our name. And so we talked at Lanes with those folks as well to get their input, and that was a very productive, you know, strong meeting. So, you know, so, you know, again, on the town side, while we've, you know, been supporting the schools, on the town side, we've been talking about, you know, what our next steps are. And again, the Select Board themselves like moved to make this a formal committee, which again entails formal appointments with voting members that have to be residents of the town. With that said, you know, the lens forward is that this is a three-year commitment for each of the members. The goal is that, starting this fall, we will have erected some kiosks around town at like different spots that are really like critical to the cultural history as well as the, the history itself of those indigenous folks who are first here. Certainly places like Russell's Garrison would be one, at the stadium. We're also talking about, in a relationship opening with the YMCA. I know that Katie Povey has been working on that, Beth Nato as well, to talk about working with like Share the Harvest and joining a Three Sisters, as well as having some kiosks there and possibly even joining a We Two. So we've looked at some other sites as well. We're also hoping to do a land acknowledgement coming up at, you know, ideally, it would be initiated at the fall town meeting and then, you know, go from there, and that would be opening up all of our, you know, meetings throughout town. I know David talked about, Mr. Tattelbaum talked about having those open up, you know, town meetings, Select Board meetings, particularly finance, you know, all the meetings throughout town is, is starting with a land acknowledgement. And we have a model that, you know, we, we spoke to the Casette, looking at a model that was used at the Russell's Mill School House is one like possible start. So again, I feel like we have had, you know, a lot of, you know, really good movement. We also have Aaron Kedoo, who has done a bit of documentary work, going back to the, the celebration for Dartmouth's anniversary. And so with that, you know, he looked into King Philip's War, and I believe he started having conversations with Ross, Rob Parodi as well, so they're working on kind of expanding that documentary. So again, I feel like there's been a lot of great traction. Now it's the question of like, you know, where we go next. And again, the lens, from what I understand, like this was, again, outside of, this happened on the Select Board to like formalize this. So my understanding is that they're looking at, and you probably have the, specifically the charge as well as the membership there, is that they're having a member that would represent the school committee, as well as a member of the Select Board, and then, you know, two at-large members, hopefully someone from the Historical Commission and so forth. I would say like I would love to see the membership largely for those folks who are interested and that are still in the committee continue. I think we've made, you know, have a lot of people who are very dedicated and have made a lot of good headway in trying to make good on this, you know, on educating the true, the folks in Dartmouth about, you know, what does the Indian name and what does this, you know, symbol really mean, and put some true history around it. So that's, that's about it.
Do you have a question for Ms. Wait before we? Yes.
Oh, I have some comments, but I don't have a question for Ms. Wait.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions? And then I guess we'll.
Well, just comments.
Okay. So thank you, Mary.
Thanks.
At this point, so I guess what we'll have to do is deliberate on how we're going to move forward. And I, Ms., Dr. Jenkins, you had your hand up and then.
So I, I have, you know, I kind of have a problem with the first bullet on the charge here. This is a committee that's made up of two members from the schools, and we're talking about providing assistance and instruction. Instruction is the purview of the schools. It should report only to the schools. And I know they're not talking about, you know, dictating what curriculum and instruction is, but I have a problem with a committee that is reporting to two places, providing feedback or providing any sort of oversight about, or about instruction. So all of the other things I don't have a problem with, but I, my recollection of our discussion of this was this going to, was going to be the town side, and the schools were going to develop something internal that was comprised of our, of teachers, right? We have no, no teachers on here, right? You know, our, our curriculum people, right? Members of the community can be on that to provide input, but I don't feel comfortable with a committee that is a minority of school committee members providing input onto curriculum instruction in the schools.
If I could just clarify, so I, I don't believe that the charge, that first bullet, is to advise curriculum.
It says instruction in the schools. I am not comfortable with that language, and I cannot vote for this with that language in this charge. We can't have the Select Board telling our teachers or giving, feeling like they have the ability to give our teachers and our staff input about instruction. That's just not acceptable.
Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. See, I, I see this a little bit differently. I see this, I, I can certainly appreciate your point of view, Dr. Jenkins. I see this as this group meeting with the curriculum directors, with the curriculum team. Weren't we just recently invited, or we talked about the, the Curriculum Advisory Board or whatnot? I see them meeting with that. I, I don't have a problem removing what you had, what was it? The instruction piece, you know, if it's that, if that's what's bothering you. But I see this as an opportunity for them to meet with representatives from the school department.
And I'm fine with that. It's just the providing ideas and assistance and the instruction in the schools, like that language is, is a bridge too far. I'm happy with them providing input, right? Even, you know, ideas, but I don't, I don't, I worry about that charge around instruction. Like what if the committee decides that the school should instruct on something that's antithetical to our charge from the state government?
But that's not their position. I guess that's not their position to make.
Right. And so that's why I would like to have the instruction in the schools piece taken out of this charge. They're welcome to meet with groups in the school and my book, and they're welcome to talk. That's totally fine. But again, what I remember when we talked about setting this up, this was going to be the town side committee and the schools. When we talked about curriculum, we were going to do our own thing. And, and that, having a group of teachers, of staff, and even some community members working on instruction, understanding the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, right? That group, I'm, I'm fine with them providing. That group, I'm, I'm fine with them providing guidance and input about curriculum.
I think ultimately, that's gonna be the group that does.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I don't have a problem, if we want to remove instruction, I'm okay with that. I don't know if anyone else, how anyone else feels.
I mean, I'm agreeable to that as well, I see your point. And so how would this work? We, you know, that's just one bullet, but we then would send this back for, for their review upon, I mean, I know we have other things to discuss, but is that, yeah, okay. Mr. Noon.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you, Sam Earl. I mean, I agree with what Dr. Jenkins, I understand what Mr. Oliver is saying, and so, I'm going, I'm looking at the membership, seven members, I'm good with that, I'm not one that likes big committees, things of that nature anyway, but where it says the Select Board may appoint additional resident voting members of the committee upon request, I'm just concerned that this thing mushrooms out, and then you, you know, and you, you go from seven members, which is, you know, easy to, you know, to work with, to.
How many? You know, what, what becomes the limit?
And such, I mean. You could have, you know, 25 people, because everybody wants to get involved, you know, God bless them for wanting to, but it then could, in some instances, get a little bit, and I don't mean in a disrespectful way, unruly and unmanageable, I guess is the, is the proper term to use, to, to do something of that nature, so, you know, I think there's, personally, there's gotta be some, some tweaking, or some, you know, some maximum that, that the Select Board are gonna put in there, you know, yeah, two or four, maybe, I can live with, but, you know, it almost, to me, sounds like there's an, you know, that could be an unlimited number of people, and then it becomes, you know, unmanageable.
May I, may I recommend we add the Select Board and School Committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, this puts basically all the power in the Select Board's hands, unsurprisingly, probably since they wrote this, but they get to appoint both of the at-large members, and they get to appoint the additional members, and so I think if we're gonna change the size of the committee, I think they need to come back to us, too.
I agree.
Yeah.
And, and the way I'm understanding it, is, understanding it, is, that, that issue aside, is that, you know, we, Ms. Wade, you know, is, is so invested, and has done so much work in the website and all of that.
Yeah.
And her comment about hoping to see that the folks, the other dedicated, Ms. Chamberlain and Ms. Nato, to be on it, you know, to continue on it. Now she, Ms. Wade, sat as a committee member, do we have to reword if we were to, I mean, my thought is to have Ms. Wade continue.
It does say one designee.
Yes.
From, I mean, could we, could our designee be a non-school committee member?
Or would we have to revise to, if we were in agreement, I.
Yeah.
To propose Ms. Wade, if she so, is interested in continuing, and I'm sure she is because of the time and effort, would we have to then reword this a little to be more specific? To have it not be a, or does a school committee member want to sit in?
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to see Ms. Wade continue, Ms. Wade.
I just wanted to like just clarify, if it's helpful to clarify, is that, and then again, like to your point around like the Select Board. Can you talk in? Oh, yeah, yeah, I apologize, of course. So, the, I will say this, it was a working group, and the Select Board, and I was, my understanding, that it was going to be formed it, and then Select Board didn't, you know, in between meetings, did decide to make, formalize it from the Select Board as, as a meeting, I, I mean, as the committee, excuse me, but it was my understanding that the intent, and again, I think the language, you know, again, could be tweaked, but the intent is that the schools still meet as a separate entity to work on this, as, and they, and again, with, led by Ms. Paveo, Mr. Tebow, you know, again, they're still working within that, and again, this, as it was, again, and the language may not speak to that, and I haven't seen that language, but I will say that the intent was that this group would be supporting the schools, but we would not be at any point dictating the curriculum or developing curriculum, it's more the support network. The task of the group is to support the schools, and then educate the town. So that is, that is why, you know, again, that was the mission and the mandate, from what I understood, as discussed at our last meeting, and I know there's like Ms. Chamberlain, there's some other members that are here, Mr. Martin, there with that last meeting, but again, that was how it was answered. I did not get a copy of the specific language, but I just wanted to clarify from like, you know, what, how we understood it, and how it's been developed, and on that committee, of course, the bulk of that committee has been teachers and administrators, with a few select other folks, meaning now myself, and, and David, and Heidi, of course, who was an educator, and Ms. Aldrich, but everyone else has been, is a teacher, and we have put out multiple, as far as like it being overwhelmed, we've had multiple calls for folks, and have not had folks coming up. So again, just, I just wanted to provide that background.
I appreciate that, but moving forward, this group cannot continue to operate this per the language here, right?
Right, no, no, I understand.
The people that you've mentioned cannot serve on this committee, right? And so we have, we can establish something else, but because of that, because all of those people who are involved in this cannot be on this committee, I, I will not vote for this with the word instruction in the, in the charge.
Right, no, that makes sense.
Period. I, I mean, everyone else can, but I will not. I'm not comfortable with that, I'm not comfortable with the committee that is a few people outside of the schools, regardless of who's done this previously, this is the language. The second thing I would, so that would be my first sort of proposed amendment, following up from what Mr. Noon has said. I would propose that the Select Board appoints a community member, and we appoint a community member, and that any additional resident voting members has to come by both boards. Otherwise, it puts, I mean, it says it reports to the school committee and the Select Board, but does it really report to us if everyone's appointed by the, you know what I mean? Most of the people are appointed by the Select Board.
I agree.
So you, you would propose amending to suggest we appoint someone, a community member, and we.
So there are two community at-large members. My proposal would be that we would appoint, allow the Select Board to appoint one, and we would appoint one. If this board is to report to the both of us, then we both need to have power here. And to Mr. Noon's point, that latter one about appointing additional voting members.
There's gotta be a cap.
Well, it should be the Select Board, additional voting members may be appointed to the committee upon, upon the request of the committee and approval of the Select Board and the school committee, yeah.
But with a, with a cap also, I agree.
Well, we can cap it, right? I'm happy to cap it.
Yeah.
But I think we, by our vote, we would cap it.
Yes.
Could I just offer a suggestion regarding that first bullet? I was wondering if the committee might consider the part where it says, "Develop appropriate commendation, commemoration, sorry, of Indigenous peoples, and act in an advisory capacity to the schools on the culture, history, and diversity of Indigenous peoples." That way, they could be a resource.
Correct. But they don't have any say in instruction or curriculum.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, so now, we would then, I mean, go ahead, Mr. Noon.
I would think now, this, you know, with these adjustments, this has to go back to the.
Okay.
To the, to the Select Board.
Okay.
So this is gonna bounce back and forth a little bit, unfortunately.
Sounds good. Excellent, and thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, thank you for your effort, Mary.
Great.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you, okay, so that'll come back to us, all right, good. Next, turn it over to you, Mr. Kylie, the fiscal year budget.
Thank you. Speaking of bouncing back and forth, the fiscal year '24 budget, so, I guess first I'd like to say that I appreciate the support of, of the Select Board and Finance Committee for voting in favor of the budget that was presented to them. I also want to convey that I, I do appreciate Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Carrero's speaking with me, and ultimately adjusting their proposal. I also, you know, would be remiss, I think, if I didn't thank the staff for their support in this budget process, and I think that they made a difference, you know, supporting what we do, and I think it was noticed by other boards, and I think it was significant. So, all that said, we still have a deficit, which I mentioned at the Select Board meeting, but nobody really paid much attention to. So, the, the current problem is that the budget that was voted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee is $99,275 less than our budget that you all voted for. Now, it's not an insurmountable amount, I think there's options available to us, but I do think that we should talk about those options, and try and figure out how we're going to do this. I, I, when I, so, I discovered the variance when I was watching the Finance Committee meeting in which they voted the budget, and I took screenshots of, of, of the, of what they were presented with on DCTV, and realized right away, as soon as I looked at it, I said, okay, that doesn't look right, and it was a series of numbers that I had to add up in my head real quick, and then I said, okay, we're still off, I don't understand why.
Who prepares those numbers for them?
So the town administration prepares those numbers. So, I immediately contacted the town administrator and the finance director, and alerted them to the fact that what had just been voted was not our budget. So I know that they've communicated that they adjusted the budget, and to its, you know, to the point where there was no deficit, but that's not accurate. So, our budget was adjusted, let's see, $489,233, we needed it to be adjusted $588,508. I spoke, I, I've gotta say, you know, I've spoken a couple of times since then with Mr. Carrero, and he is, he's making an effort. It's his, his first time through this process, and I think that may be part of the, part of the issue. So one of the things that he pointed out was that, early on in the process, when they calculated our, our budget, they used a percentage increase on top of the, on top of the FY23 budget. So they said, oh, it's a 5.1% increase, and they took the FY23 budget and increased it by 5.1%, however, the increase is actually 5.1234%, so it is rounded to 5.1. So that variance is $12,000. Again, not insurmountable, and if that's all it is, you know, we can figure something out, I guess, but it's more than that, and I don't know what, what the rest of the variance is, I don't understand. So, I will say that Mr. Carrero has made an effort to lobby for us in terms of, maybe there's another way to approach this, and maybe they could give us some capital improvement money at the next town meeting. That was an offer that I don't think is a sure thing offer, but I think that was a way, you know, to, to try and help with the gap. At this point, both boards have voted, I don't think there's any intent from the town side to, to change what's gonna be on the Schedule A at town meeting. So, that's kind of the start of this discussion, but the other part of this is how the budget gap was, was resolved. And the largest, first of all, we have done the bulk of the work on this, obviously, we, we reduced the budget $361,000 on March 27th, we, meaning the school committee and me, on, on March 27th. We, then the proposal was made by Mr. McGinnis to eliminate our $200,000 amount that is in the operating budget, but not directly in our operating budget, so the town's operating budget for technology purchases each year. So that's been done. What that means is that we have to, it's, it's not a, it's not an increase for us, it's just something that we then have to absorb. And we do need technology, we can't go without. We can find a way to minimize that for a year, and kind of try and bridge a gap, but it's not a long-term solution for us. So, the other way that was presented at the Select Board to bridge the gap was a discussion regarding less capital projects for the schools. So I just want to remind everyone that we have millions and millions of dollars of capital projects in our, in our five-year capital improvement plan that I think ultimately are necessary, and I think the town has historically been quite supportive of the sort of maintenance projects that are necessary to keep these buildings in good operating condition, not so much big projects, right? We haven't, haven't really accomplished a lot in terms of big, major projects, more maintenance-related projects. I'll remind you that the things that you've already voted for, for capital improvement projects, that I think are necessary for this year, are roofing repairs for this building, which we know, we talked a lot about, that we need to string along this roof until the Mass School Building Authority begins operating their accelerated repair program again. We have no idea when that's gonna happen, no sign that it is, and we really need to extend the life of this roof as best we can. We have technology, security, and, technology, security, and infrastructure that needs to get done, we have, for that, we have E-rate funding, of which we are eligible and will get, but we need the town share to be able to complete those projects, and that's, it's really critical that we do that. We have a vehicle for the new 18 to 22 program, we'll find a way to work without that for the short term, but ultimately, that transition program should have a vehicle, it's something that, you know, we have high on our list, we have bathroom renovations that are related to accessibility concerns, we have fire system upgrades, that I get calls from the fire chief annually, where is it? Are we, are we there yet? Did we get funding yet? One of our fire chiefs. So, we have high school track reconstruction, we're fixing it, it's crumbling on the edges, needs to get done. We have opportunities to do some energy-efficient lighting projects that we don't have money for, that actually would save us money.
And we need new schools, let's.
Well, I was gonna get there.
We need new schools.
I was gonna get there, I had a bunch more on my list, but I'll skip ahead. But, but ultimately, we need the big picture projects, which are gonna shape what education looks like in this community moving forward.
Agreed.
And we do have to tackle it. So, the way to fix this can't be ultimately just like not doing these things, right? So, so I'm a little concerned that that's the way this is being solved, but at the same time, it was nice not to send out pink slips on Teacher Appreciation Week last week, so that was good, we avoided that.
It was very good.
But it's, you know, still not a great situation, and I guess in terms of the, the, you know, $99,000 that, you know, is still a gap, I see a few options, certainly would want the committee to discuss this, but one option is that we could do something on town meeting floor, so we could move, if, if we thought we had support, we could attempt to, to amend the budget on town meeting floor. If we're gonna proceed in that way, I think it would make sense for me, maybe others, to have discussions with just about everybody involved, right? I don't want that to be a surprise, so I'd want certainly the town administration, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee to understand that this is still a deficit, we need to figure it out, and we're prepared to do that, if that's, if that's the strategy. We could cut, we could, we've already cut, we could cut some more. I don't like that, but it's an option. We could consider rolling with what we have, not cut, and then next year, potentially seek a transfer for, for funds from FinCom. Not sure how that would work, because it's really supposed to be unanticipated, and so I'm not sure, but it could be something that we could have discussion with, I think, and, and we could ask, and it might be a little late, but we could ask for funds from a reserve fund, like the kindergarten, full-day kindergarten reserve fund, be transferred over. Might be a little late for the warrant, so I'm not sure that that.
To tackle that in October.
Yeah, yeah, that would have to be in October, which it could be in October.
I was just gonna say, we could do that in the fall.
Right, so, so that's a solution, I mean, it's a one-time, again, one-time fund solution for a permanent problem, not the best, but it's something we could consider, and there's probably other options that I haven't thought of yet, but, but. And there's probably other options that I haven't thought of yet, but, but none of them are good. But that's sort of where I am with this. So, certainly would be interested in what the school committee thinks about those options and the situation in general.
Thank you. May I open it up, Mr. Oliver?
So, first of all, thank you, Mr. Kylie, for the details. So, it's very helpful to have the oversight and the high-level synopsis of our budget situation. To me, it's, while it's certainly unfortunate and I'm still trying to understand how we, how the town ended up, ninety-nine thousand dollars short and the committee's voted on that and that's what's going to be pasted on the warrant. You know, I, I certainly want to think that I'm a team player. And I think the, the easiest and the most logical thing to do is that I, I would be in favor of tapping the, the Kindergarten Stabilization Fund for the simple reason that we're never going to use it anyway. This is, this is a one-time, uh, a one-time expense, because I don't expect this to happen again next year. I, I am a little bit concerned with the direction that the town seems to be taking with, with the school department and the, while I can certainly appreciate the oversight by the Finance Committee, but the barrage and the redundant requests for information seems to be getting, uh, to be quite a bit. And I think what they need to understand, and maybe this is something for this committee, is that for every request that the school administration gets, Mr. Kylie and the Business Department, that is time taken away to compile. While some of it's readily available, right? A lot of it's readily available. There are specific numbers that they're looking for and some of this is readily available on the Department of Education's School and Profiles website. All the finance data, enrollment data, most of that's there. So, I am concerned about that. The long and the short of it is, though, I'm willing to tap, if we need to, in the fall, go after that money, the Kindergarten Stabilization Fund. I will leave on this note. We certainly do need to look. Next year, we're going to have some serious problems with the budget. We all know this. We've been talking about this for a long time. And as a member of the Budget Subcommittee, I think we need to start having these conversations sooner, rather than later, like sooner, like maybe August, September, because I'm very worried about what's, what's going on, as well as I do think that we need to take, take a good, hard look at enrollment. This committee should be looking at enrollment numbers and trends and seeing where we're at. And the reality is, you know, we need to make, make sure that we're keeping our enrollment up. We need to be doing more outreach to our, and I know Mr. Shea's been doing a little bit of it this year, to our middle school, kids, keeping them in district. But there, there's a lot to be done. And I will resign the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Dr. Jenkins?
So, I want to start up with a question for Mr. Kylie, based on the comments that we had earlier this evening. And there are some implication that we are being not transparent about our, not implication. It was stated that we are being not transparent about the increase in classroom staff. But if I am correct, that increase represents proposed salary increases along with step increases. Is that correct?
Sure. So, so, the FY twenty-four budget in the classroom staff lines includes their existing salary. It includes the, a provision for collective bargaining for fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-four, because we're not settled in either.
Right.
Right? It includes any contractual increases, like-
Step increases.
Step increase or a longevity milestone and so forth. It also includes, we increased an, an ELL staff member in our budget this year. We increased a preschool staff member in our budget. We then adjusted other things when we cut. So, we also have the eighteen-to-twenty-two program. So, there's a number of things that make up, actually, classroom staff went up five-point-nine percent. I can tell you that, I'm not going to talk about collective bargaining directly. However, I can tell you that my goal is to give all we can. And, so, I don't-
Yeah, I just, I just want to clear that out because of, you know, because of, because of what-
That was a good point.
I don't think, we're not trying to be transparent. We've, not transparent, we've had discussions about this. That's what that represents. So, thank you for, for clarifying that. You know, I, I agree with Mr. Oliver. You know, I'm, I'm concerned about sort of where this is going. You know, as, as we were sitting here thinking about this and thinking about how the proposal to meet our, right, our needs is, well, we'll take it out of your capital. Right? And the, the insinuation was at, not insinuation, the statement was at our joint meeting that, well, they turn all this money back for capital and we don't turn any. Yeah, we run a lean budget, right? We budget for what our needs are, right? So, we don't have anything to return back for capital. And so, I'm not really sure why we're being faulted for only asking the town for what we need. Could we pad our budget? Sure, we could pad our budget so that we're turning back a bunch of money to get capital, but we're not doing that. And so, that's why we have to look, right? Because this community hasn't really sort of made a viable plan for addressing capital needs, aside from sort of fluffing, you know, some budgets and budging with some estimates to make sure we have enough for capital. We, you do a great job in developing our budget. It's a tight budget that reflects what our needs are and that's why we don't turn back in capital. And so, to say, "Well, because you don't turn anything back, we're not going to give you, we're going to take from your capital," that really bothers me. That, it goes to Mr. Oliver's point about the tone and the approach to the needs of the school. And so, I, I also sort of have a problem with how this has been. Like, we've been treated like some sort of problem child, right? And I don't appreciate that. That having been said, I also agree with Mr. Oliver that, that we are where we are and we have to try to do the best we can. My only concern about relying on full-day kindergarten is, it's not really a one-time need, because next year, we're going to need what we requested this year plus, right? So, they're going to have to find that hundred thousand in next year and then some. So, I am a little bit concerned using, you know, a non-recurring revenue to, to, to close that gap. So, I guess my preference would be, I know Mr. Nunes has some ideas and I think he's been studying, is for us to maybe try to address this on town meeting floor. And if that doesn't work, then we come back to the Plan B. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kylie, great job with everything that's gone on. Having watched a couple of those FinCom meetings and been at a couple of them type of deal. In my thirty-plus years on this committee, no disrespect, somebody's got to do, that's the worst that I've ever seen from the finance, from a finance committee. Personal opinion, my opinion only, so before everybody goes flying off the deep handle, they way overstepped what they needed to do, type of deal. When I get asked at a meeting, "Oh, can we have the new superintendent's contract?" Why? Well, the town accountant's going to have a copy of it. Get it from there. Get it from her. That type of deal, by statute, type of deal. You know, to sit there and pull apart school choice and, you know, without accurate numbers and say, you know, "Well, those hundred-and-forty students that you have kind of probably cost your district eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars." Give me a break, okay? The schools are open, you know, I mean, we're here, the lights are on. The lights are on if there's ten students or, you know, five thousand students in this building. So, you know, get with the program. Sorry, I'm ranting. I apologize. June, this is what I do. Okay? So, correct, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong in all seriousness. So, we're actually short four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, okay? That being the three-sixty-one that we cut, because they didn't give us that back. Am I correct?
Right.
They didn't give us that back.
That's correct.
Plus the ninety-nine, so we're short four-sixty.
Plus the two-hundred.
Yeah, so-
Really? We don't have the two-hundred.
We don't have the two-hundred. So, we're shot six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, so. My game plan is once, you know, and I know that everything's kind of put to bed, because I guess they've got to get that out the door. The, the clerk has to get it out the door, everything out the door this week. And then, what I'm going to do in all seriousness is, once I get, once I, once I get it, I'm going to take a look at it and I'll let everybody know and, well, I'll let Mr. Kylie know. And I'll see what I can find for six-hundred thousand dollars in cuts and get it amended on the floor for that six-hundred thousand dollars. That's my game. I've said that before, that's my game plan and that's what I'll do. I may lose, but I'll go down fighting. That's not necessary. I'm not saying anything different than I haven't said all year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes.
Can I just say, can I just request that we perhaps have, I don't know, maybe, maybe, maybe we have a plan for just the ninety-nine thousand dollars, but I'm, I'm not going to tell you what to do, so that's fine. You're going to do what you're going to do and go for it. Yeah.
Yeah, no, Mr. Nunes, I, I really appreciate you bringing that up, that we're, we're actually in the whole, all of that amount, right? We've done a lot of collaborating. We've been in a lot of giving, giving in in that respect. And, and the questions that we've received and that have been asked of, the data that's been asked of Mr. Kylie, and thank you very much for the, the incredible job that you did on multiple occasions to really articulate the value that we get on the backs of, of everyone involved and, and the implications of that and, and our, you know, in reality, are having such a low tax base and, and leading to this and, and really, the questions seem to come from a place of not understanding the work. And it, and I'm sorry, but also, it seems that a lack of valuing what education brings to a community and the direct correlation or the implication of, of the value of our homes down the line, if we continue on this trajectory of, 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 you know, having such a low tax rate. You know, I work with families and they're moving in from other districts and they're saying, "Well, you don't have X, Y, Z." I was talking to, to Dr. Saber about this today. We had a nice conversation. But, you know, we, we aren't able to provide the, the extras. We're very, very lean and we do a lot, because a lot of people come to the plate and offer their time and, and they value what this experience is for the kids in this community. But if we keep going down this way, this path, it's not going to be what it is now. It's, it's not going to be, we're, we're not going to have the quality. We're not going to have the, the people, people don't, people can't move into this community right now because of the expense of the houses. And therein lies the commentary of Mr. Oliver. Well, what, what implication is that going to have? If we don't have young families moving in because they can't afford to live here, who are we? What are we doing? I mean, Dartmouth, one Dartmouth. I guess we're just going to be one Dartmouth and, and we're not going to have, you know, what we have. It's, it's really frustrating to see the questions that seem to, to, seem to be coming fundamentally from a place of not valuing public education and what that means for our future. So, I, I, I'm just, it's frustrating. And so, I support Mr. Nunes, what you're saying there and town, I'm a town meeting member. I give you credit. You know, there, hopefully, we, we move through this and I appreciate, you know, everyone's work on this. Mr. Nunes?
One, one last thing, too. I know it's probably not lost on a committee, but just on the people out there, too, with the three-sixty-one that we cut and what we've done and everything else. We've taken fifty thousand dollars from school choice for next year for supplies.
Oh, right, right.
Per se, paper, pencils, books, that type of deal, so. You talk about kind of in quote-unquote, using a one-time source, so. We've got some proverbial potholes coming.
Yes, we do.
Or, they're not potholes, they're sinkholes. Thank you.
And we're going to need some buckets and new roofs and all kinds of things. But does anyone else have anything to add?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Yeah.
I've said my piece.
Thank you. So, next we have finally new business. I'm going to, I'll ask you to, to introduce the next topic, although, you know, I do wear a hat, but we have a CPAC annual survey results.
Sure. So, so, we're excited to learn some more about the CPAC survey results and talk a little bit more about what we do to support students with, with special needs in the district. So, we have Ms. Townsend, who's going to come up and start us off.
Good evening. Thank you so much, the school committee members, for having us share this information today. So, I wanted to start just by giving a little bit of an overview of the CPAC and, and the slides actually go into this a little bit as well. But as part of our process, the Dartmouth CPAC does annually conduct a survey, which goes to all students, all families of students who have IEPs in the district. And the purpose of the survey, like I said, the slides will go into more detail, but what we really want to get out of it is to just hear from parents, all of their experiences, kind of what their thoughts are. Every year, regardless of how many parents participate, we always have a really good cross-section of the six buildings, which are part of our district, as well as parents who have students who are in out-of-district placements. So, even in surveys that, you know, we might have wanted a little more overall participation, we've always been able to get some really good data, because we're looking at really that ages three through twenty-two and all of those services. So, so, in terms of, you know, how we got here, we put the survey out and left it open for about a month, actually, a little over. Stayed open a little bit past. It closed the first week of April. And we had sixty-five responses and, and parents providing those responses. In addition to their feedbacks, answering specific questions on a Likert scale, there was also an opportunity for parents to, there was an open response section where parents could provide their feedback on any topics that were not specifically asked. And then, probably the greatest part about the survey and the thing that I just is so wonderful about the survey is that we have a special section for nominations, where parents who filled out the survey are asked to recognize a staff member or student who has gone above and beyond to serve our students with disabilities. And so, while you will hear Deb present, Deb and I present the names at the end of our slides, I just wanted to let the whole school committee know that we are actually supporting all of those nominees and those winners tomorrow at our last CPAC meeting, which is at 6:00 PM at the Quinn Elementary School. It is an open meeting, so we invite all members of the public to join us, where we will formally recognize and provide kudos to all of those who were nominated in the survey. So, I am going to ask Deb August to join me here at the podium to present those survey results. And then, at the end, she and I will talk a little bit about the recognition and some donations that have come through for the CPAC.
Thanks, Beth. All right, so I'm going to start off with the survey here. So, this survey was conducted yearly for parents, guardians of children who reside in Dartmouth and receive special education services. The goal of this survey is to help the Dartmouth CPAC, which stands for Special Education Parent Advisory Council, advise the school committee and school administration regarding parents' thoughts and feelings about the special education services their children receive. I am the treasurer of the CPAC, so, one of the officers, along with Kathleen there. So, each school district shall create a, kind of the model for the CPAC. District-wise, Parent Advisory Council offering membership to all parents of eligible students and other interested parties. The Parent Advisory Council duties shall include, but not be limited to, advising the district on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. Meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development and evaluation of the school district's special education programs. The Parent Advisory Council shall, shall establish bylaws regarding officers and operational procedures. And in the course of its duties, the Parent Advisory Council shall receive assistance from the district without charge, upon reasonable notice, and subject to the availability of staff and, and resources. Below here, the district shall conduct, in cooperation with the Parent Advisory- Below here, the district shall conduct, in cooperation with the Parent Advisory Council, at least one workshop annually within the school district on the rights of students and their parents and guardians under the state and federal special education laws. And Beth always does that every year for us. Role of the CPAC. CPACs are state-mandated local networks of parents of children with special education needs who work collaboratively with special officials to improve results for students. CPACs act as advisors to school district administrators and also participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of school district's education programs. CPAC members meet regularly with the local director of special education and other appropriate school personnel as needed to participate in matters pertaining to the education, health, and safety of special needs students. CPAC members promote communications and programs within the community to encourage understanding, acceptance, and inclusion of special needs students. CPAC members communicate with local, state, and national organizations, as well as councils and groups that support children with special needs. By becoming involved in the CPAC, parents can improve their children's learning opportunities by working with school officials to identify issues, research programs, and develop procedural and policy solutions. So all are welcome whenever we have the meetings to join us. Why encourage parents to connect? Peer support, peer encouragement, information, common purpose, build relationships with both parents as well as direct personnel, widen circle of understanding for all, build trust, open doors to opportunities. When families, communities, and schools work together, students are more successful and the entire community benefits. Services that were received. IEP services. From the total that entered this, 84.6% received IEP services, 16.9% received 504 plan accommodations, and 1.5% are in the process of going through, through the two systems there. School student attends. I'll, I'll do the major ones here. So at Dartmouth High, we've got 18.5%. Dartmouth Middle, 15.4%. Quinn, 27.7%. Potter's 9.2%. And pre-K, Cushman or Potter is 15.4%. The rate referral process, one being terrible, six being excellent, there were 61 responses. 3.3% responded with a one, terrible. 1.6% responded with a two. 9.8% responded with a three. 16.4% responded with a four. 18% with a five. And 50.8% with a six being excellent. Evaluations reported explained in a clear, easy-to-understand way. There were 62 responses, 1.6% responded with a one, again being no way. 3.2% responded with a two. 9.7% responded with a three. 9.7% responded with a four. 27.4% responded with a five. And 48.4% responded with a six, being strongly agree. The components of the IEP 504 were explained in detail. 1.5% responded with a one. 4.6% responded with a two. 7.7% responded with a three. 13.8% responded with a four. 23.1% responded with a five. And 49.2 responded with a six, meaning strongly agree. Parent guardian concerns were addressed during the team meeting, one being a no and six being strongly agree. 1.5% responded with a one. 3.1% responded with a two. 6.2% responded with a three. 13.8% responded with a four. 13.8% responded with a five. And 61.5% responded with a six, being strongly agree. Parent guardian concerns prior to slash after meeting addressed in a timely manner. 3.1% responded with a no, being the one. 6.2% responded with a two. 3.1% responded with a three. 12.3% responded with a four. 23.1% responded with a five. And 52.3% responded with a six, being strongly agreed that things were addressed in a timely manner. Do you believe your child's placement and service delivery is appropriate? One being closer to no and six being strongly agree. 3.1% responded with a one. 1.5% responded with a two. 10.8 responded with a three. 7.7% responded with a four. 18.5% responded with a five. And 58.5% responded with a six, being strongly agree. Question here, does your child experience bullying as a result of their disability? We've got, I'll start with the top, 12.3% responded with a yes. 18.5% not applicable. And 69.2% responded with a no. I think Dartmouth has a pretty good hold on unified, being unified with, with that. So you want to join me? All right, so 2023 nominees, nominees, we have students and staff. I'll start with the students. Okay, so the students from Dartmouth High School, Evan Moniz, Piper Harrison, and Jillian Hughes. Congratulations.
And again. Because we are being livestreamed, I want to just plug again, all of the staff and students that are recognized on this slide will be at the CPAC meeting tomorrow, Quinn School, 6 o'clock. We'd love to see everyone there.
And your other plug is that they were all nominated from the survey?
From the survey, yes. So these are all named as part of the survey itself. And so, so for the staff, I don't know, you want to, we'll alternate. Do you want to do the DHS?
I'll do the DHS.
Sure.
Got it. Right, so from Dartmouth High School, we've got Peter Bangs, Sandy Fernandes, Melissa Fitzgerald, guess got nominated twice, Shari Hul, Kristen Johnson, Ashley, I'll say KP, Jessica Lassie.
And then in the middle column, from DMS, Rachel Lassie was recognized. From Quinn, Lindsay Perry, Michael Capello, Kim Carrero, and Ashley Cucciaro Pozo. And from the Potter School, Tricia Weaver and Melissa McHenry.
And from DeMello, we have Heather Noyes Fred, Fredette? Fredette, thank you. Anna Paula, would you give me all the lasagna? All right, Mary Ann Sorenson?
Sorenson.
Sorenson?
You do it.
Okay. You got the names.
Mary Ann Sorenson from Quinn, Melissa Sullivan from Quinn. Lindsay Vafidis was nominated three times from Quinn, from three different parents. Lindsay Ribbing from Cushman nominated twice, two different parents. And Elizabeth DeBarrows from Cushman. And while we are on the topic of recognition, while not directly related to our survey, I did want to just share a little bit. We, we both have some really good news that we wanted to publicly recognize. So I wanted to just come on the podium and thank Stan and Paul's Local Appliance Center here in Dartmouth, who really rose to the occasion in donating appliances for our Atlas program. As you know, our transition program, a, a large piece is to have all of the tools we need to practice life skills, many of those occurring kind of with, you know, making and preparing food. And we did need some updated appliances. And I just want to say that Stan and Paul's really answered the call. And so thank you. You know, they're a local business who really did a lot for our students or our incoming Atlas students, and so I just wanted to recognize them.
In addition to the Atlas program, the CPAC, we had our Resource Fair two weeks ago. Is there anybody in two weeks?
Already been two weeks.
And we raised money through that Resource Fair slash Craft Fair to fund some of the programs that we do have at the high school. And one of those funds, we wanted to donate $400 to the Atlas program. So I don't know where the camera is. Yeah. Photo app, okay.
Stay still. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Perfect. Don't spend it all in one place.
The treasurer, so I'll be paying you. So thank you, just. Wait, one more thing. We've got a couple more things, okay. So we also, that's all right. We also want to say that we're going to be donating to the Unified Bowling Club, to best buddies. So that's the other couple of programs that we want to put some money towards that. Our best buddy program has like, it's really, really grown. Yeah, we, we've been doing some great stuff. Ironic. So we, we have a good time. We just had our best buddies friendship ball this past Friday. It was carnival themed. We had such a great time, it was amazing. It really was amazing. Also a little plug to Phoenix on the Fly for giving us a, a really generous donation at the Resource Fair. They were the food, the food truck there. And then after they did all their business, they came in and gave us $100 towards our program.
And the food was delicious.
The food was delicious for Phoenix on the Fly. Okay. You want to come up or, you want me to do it on my own?
Yeah, so, well, don't go anywhere.
If it's okay, I can come up there too. But we also wanted to acknowledge that this is Beth's last meeting with us. And so as representative of the CPAC, we just had, we wanted to recognize your time. We have a little certificate and a little gift for you. Because, you know, I, I wear two hats and Deb is my partner in crime, along with Ms. Mello as a liaison and others who are, have graduated out of the CPAC who still participate in all of our good work. And Ms. Townsend has spent countless time meeting with me, at least bi-monthly, and checking in with the CPAC and has never said no to us and has always been supportive of our really wild ideas and suggestions. And she has been wonderful to the CPAC and a friend, I can say, and has offered her ideas as well and pitched in, in coordinating, whether it be childcare for our CPAC meetings, making it easier for families to come, or offering ideas of adding sort of a bingo component to our Resource Fair, making it more lively and fun for people to check in at every table and win a gift, you know, if they, if they do that. And it has been a pleasure over the years to get to know you and work with you. And on behalf of the CPAC, we wanted.
Read this out loud here. So recognition of support awarded to Elizabeth Cabral Townsend, pupil support services administrator Dartmouth Public Schools. In recognition of your years of support of the work of this Dartmouth CPAC, your ability to partner with and offer assistance as needed has not gone unnoticed. We wish you the best as you embark on a new and exciting future career endeavor with gratitude, Dartmouth CPAC. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, I'm just a mess.
Sorry.
Sorry, I did not prepare to be a mess tonight. Thank you. So I will say, the collaboration with Deb and with Kathleen have been some of the most amazing moments I've had in the past nine years. I agree, Kathleen, I just think, you know, we, we gelled early and often and, you know, our, our collective three heads have always been, you know, better than one. It, it's been such an honor and I just want to thank you. Thank the CPAC, thank the students, families, and staff. You know, it's bittersweet, but I do thank you all. I really appreciate this.
Look at you see our kids grow up together.
I know, Deb just said we saw our kids grow up together. When I started, my oldest was two and a half and now she's going to middle school. And I've got one who's almost three and a half, so, my youngest. So it's just, yeah, it's been a wonderful journey. Thank you. Thank you, the school committee. Thank you so much, I do appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Any questions?
Yes.
Where, where can I find past surveys so that I can see trends of how parents are feeling?
Yeah, we have those. I can, I can get those to you unofficially, but they're within. Yeah, and I could, I can contribute, yeah. Yeah, easily for you, yeah. Yeah, it's been good to see because there have been themes that have emerged over the years that have tripped planning and, and things, you know. For instance, the transition program. I mean, there, one year there was a definite, obvious response to say something to the effect of a lack thereof already on the radar. And so, you know, planning towards that end, you know, I'm, I know the results have, have helped move things forward in, in different ways. So, yeah, I can get that to you, absolutely. Anyone else?
Nice job to both of you.
Good job.
Thank you, Deb. Better you than me. And so, net, without further ado, I'll move it on to superintendent's update. Mr. Kylie?
Thank you, Mrs. Amorall. So a few things. Last week, again, was Teacher Appreciation Week. I know Mr. Porter acknowledged that and a few, few people have said something about that. And I just wanted to continue to express our gratitude for our staff that does so much for our kids. So we really do appreciate that. It was also School Lunch Superhero Day since our last meeting and just wanted to say thanks to those outstanding cafeteria staff. I know one of our, one of our young friends tonight was particularly pleased with.
Chicken and spaghetti.
Chicken and spaghetti. And he's Italian, so he knows. So we're entering, in terms of athletics, we're entering the final weeks of the sports season. Most of our teams are qualifying for the state tournament and have great, great seasons. It was the FSC Outdoor Track Championship tonight at New Bedford. That's where Serena came from. I think she ran the one mile and the two mile and then came to school committee and looked, looked pretty composed. So she, she's obviously pretty talented. We, we had a great showing of the Unified Outdoor Track South Sectional at Middleborough last week, and I think they're looking forward to the state meet. We have the Special Olympics coming up, so May 19th at DHS, if, if anyone wants to stop by, 8:45. Rain date is May 22nd. We, we've had so much participation that we've actually split it into two days. So that will be at the high school on May 19th and then there will be an event on May 25th at Dartmouth Memorial Stadium with a rain, rain date of the 26th. So that's, that's how successful it's been, which is, which is fantastic. National Honor Society induction is this week, Thursday at 6:00 at DHS here. Proms next week, graduation, June 4th. So we've got a lot of, lot, a lot of things happening before our next meeting on June 5th, so a lot of activity.
Thank you. I, I would just add, I was looking at my texts because I, I was able to participate, well, I was able to attend the Dartmouth High School Day of No Hate a couple of weeks ago. And I was actually invited there through, I'm, I'm on the Rotary Club, so they were in, you know, conversation with, oh gosh, I'm forgetting her name now, one of the staff at the high school. Gosh, sorry, can't think of her name. Anyway, I thought I heard it. But anyway, and so I was, you know, it was, it was mentioned and I stopped by and I just wanted to look at my notes from one of my colleagues on the Rotary where I said, you know, it was super interactive, it was set up outside with a bunch of tables and games of information. It was a proud moment, I wrote, to see these kids rising to the occasion and truly approaching this topic in, in just a great, positive way. And they were so mature and they were so independent, so inclusive. It made me really proud. And so that was my response to Mr. Al's on, on the Rotary when he was asking me how the event was. And it was just beautiful to see, it was during lunch and I'm, I was really glad to be part of it and the kids just, that your community, Mr. Shay, was, it was really impressive to see the.
see the inclusivity and the acceptance and the pride that the students took in whether they were the different clubs that, that they represent or, it was just really beautiful and, and the way that they made it so interactive and fun. I still have my green heart glasses. And I just really thank, it just was a proud moment to, to see that event come to fruition. So I just wanted to mention that. I don't know if my committee has anything else to add? Mr. Nunes, anything? No?
No, the, I mean, just, I was tied up Thursday night. I had a meeting, but I popped in Wednesday afternoon and caught part of the art show that they had here. Again, as always, what our students do is, I can't draw a straight line with a straight edge and what, what they have in there is just unbelievable. And congratulations to all of them. How the judges judge, I can't, I, no clue. So, I'll, I'll just leave it at that. A congratulations to them. And then just the, the DHS Theater Company for, I was here with Friday, Thursday night for Mamma Mia and.
Great show.
They did an unbelievable job, you know, and talking to the students. I saw them later on and parents, you know, after I got back as I was out of town. But they said, you know, Friday and Saturday was just the same. So, it was great, great to hear that. So congratulations to Dennis and Shirley and everybody there. That's all I have.
Great. So our, the next meeting of the school committee is scheduled for June 5th at 6:30 here at the Library Media Center. And if that is it, unless somebody has something else to add, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn into executive session for an update on union and non-union negotiations.
So moved.
And not returning to open session.
Not returning to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yep.
Kathleen Amorall?
Yes.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Elizabeth Coughlin?
Here.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes, here.
I'm here.
Oh, we're adjourned. Mr. Nunes?